We'll go around the table and introduce ourselves. I'm Dale Stanbrook, I'm the mayor. Thanks again for being here.
I'm Henry Fisher, I'm a councilperson for Ward Two.
I'm Kristi Jordy, I'm the Ward One Council Member.
I'm Morgan Hema, I am a council member at large.
Hi Pat, welcome. I'm Tim Menard, I'm council member at large as well.
Hello, I'm Delane Klot, council member for Ward Six.
Welcome Don Cavallaro, council member for Ward Four.
Oh, good evening, hello. I'm Pat Omen Appicott.
It's nice to meet you Pat. So we just have a series of questions that we're gonna go through and if you could just give us a thorough answer once you're done. If you'd like me to repeat the questions, I'm happy to do that as well for you. I know sometimes it can be a couple parts, so we're happy to repeat something if necessary.
And before we start, could I just ask, should I have the mic on now? Or can you hear me?
The mic is on.
The mic is on.
I see a red here, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, the red means it's on.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay. I always thought green is on, so I'm glad we got that out of the way. All right, I'm ready to go.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for checking. So Pat, what do you know about the community of Kirkston and what do you believe should be the community's top three goals?
Well, you know, prior to, thank you for the opportunity to interview for this position. You know, prior to even applying for a position, I always delve into the agenda, the minutes, the newspaper clippings. You know, you're unique in your charter, so I wanted to go through that and get an intense knowledge of, you know, the form of government you have. And, you know, the one thing I would say that I find quite interesting is, is that form of government. The weak mayoral, strong city council form of government outlined in your charter, I think it's probably the most unique ways of government that I'm accustomed to. And that's another reason why I've applied, is because you have two at-large people, you have a mayor, and you have people from each ward. I don't think you can get much democratic than that. And so, I'm used to having five elected officials there, but what I find is, that's not enough, that's not enough individuals many times. Sometimes it can be a three-two issue and, and a lot of times things can't get done as effectively or as efficiently when you have a much broader representation of your government unit. So that intrigued me. City of Kirkston, of course, has got a long historic history. That charter was, was I think first developed, oh, I'm going off my memory here, so forgive me if I get it wrong, but late 1800s, like 1899, if my memory served me correctly, you re-upped it in the early 1900s. And just recently, about 10 or 12 years ago, I think you, you did a revision as well. But I think you've held true to the idea that if you're gonna make a change, you're gonna make a decision in government, it isn't just gonna be a, you know, one, one vote over the total, you know, meaning out of nine people, like a, like a five-member vote, you, you actually have to have a much larger number. So it, it has to drive good decision-making, but also the ability to be able to work together on issues. So that's what intrigued me about it. That's also kind of one of my goals that I was gonna list for you, is the fact that, you know, since your inception, re-upping your charter, I'm sorry, revising it three times, is, you might want to accelerate that into maybe just every 10 years. And the reason I bring that up is, there are some situations, especially with regards to ordinance and committees, there's specific language in your charter on how to do things that I think is worthy of revisiting and maybe some benchmarking with other communities. But, I, I think it's a great, it's a great structured form of government. I think the other things that I've learned about City of Kirkston, I got a great drive around, you know, from your city administrator and, but I actually drove around myself. I'm a big believer in the historic nature of a city, and the first thing I always go to is the downtown and look at the historic buildings, and what are they, what's happening with those buildings. Some have been renovated into multifamily units, but based on my research, there's a number of buildings that are just, in the upstairs, the higher levels, just vacant. And I think when you research the need of your housing stock, there's a great need for more multifamily opportunities. I mean, you have certain levels of, of high-end housing to, to townhomes, to, you have a trailer park, to other items, but the idea of more multifamily housing, especially individuals that are in college, that aren't working, that need a place to live, and people that, at this point in our economy, aren't interested in buying a house, whether they can't secure a loan, or that's just too big of an investment, I, I see an opportunity or a goal there to really revisit your housing across the board. I know you're doing quite a bit with rehabilitation, I know you have a small city development grant that you have approved, that you haven't implemented yet, but what I would say is, is that really should be a top goal from my perspective. I think the final goal that I would have, for me, is really to appreciate and understand your existing budgets. I've gone through your budgets and your financial statements, but, but I think it's important for me to, to immerse myself in the culture of your department heads, understand the issues and the innovations that they're having within their department, and starting to build that level of trust and that relationship. I know the core areas that you've written in your brochure, one of them is, is relations. And I mean relations with collective bargaining units, but also relationships with the community, relationships with employees. You really are emphasizing relationships, and you should, because I think that's a critical component on, on having a very functional government. And so I wanna very much immediately get to know and immerse myself into the culture of the city.
Thank you. As the city administrator, you will be responsible for overseeing the finance department. Could you walk us through your process for developing and managing municipal budgets, including any challenges you have faced and how you've addressed them? And then we do have a follow-up question for that.
Well, the process for me is, is probably very much in line with most other government unit processes, but for me, it starts with you, the elected officials. Before we start the budget process, and I like to start it in June, I like to go before the board and I like to ask some questions. I like to do a little research ahead of that, basically getting a legislative review of what's happening federal and at the state level that could affect us, whether positively or negatively. Bring as much information before you, early on, so you can make an informed decision. And the questions I'm asking for you early on is, what is this, what is the cohesive strategy of this city council that we can put together on what you want to see in the budget for the next year? Is there a particular area you want to reduce costs in? Is there an area we need to infuse additional funding for from the previous year? But I like to start with the, the city council, and sort of get a general macro theme. But I like to do it in a way of, of providing as much information as I can to you through legislative review, benchmarking as best we can with, with other equivalent cities, to establish a best practice. But once we get to that point, once I get that theme from you, I like to sit down with the management team and say, oh good, this is what the city has now decided. These are the core areas that you start working on your budget, you need to focus on. And I like to provide each department head with their budget, their current budget, actual and what was proposed, but then the previous three years, so they can establish an historic trend of where they're going with their budget. And what I really ask them to do is, I ask them to defend their budget. Why have we invested more money in your department? Why do you need more personnel? You need to advocate for your budget and for your department. And we ask tough questions. We ask them early and often, so we're not having a struggle later on as we're getting to the point of approving budgets. So it's, it starts with them providing a preliminary budget, and then we go through a process where it's been successful for me, of continued public review. We eventually will get to a truth and taxation hearing, but continued public review on budgets, whether it's through a committee level, that has representation from elected officials, or if it's just a peer review committee of the management team, where we continue to vet each other's budgets, and ask the tough questions of each other, and then present things to you as a review, and for you to come back to us with additional direction. So that process takes place several months, it's done publicly, it's done in front of the, of the community and the public, so they can certainly ask questions of their elected officials if they need to. Eventually, it gets to a truth and taxation hearing. My experience is, I spent 23 years producing those presentations. But when you get to that TNT hearing, you will have vetted, in, in my experience, everything that needs to be vetted. Our department heads have given us a solid, refined budget, and it comes down to getting a public review, and then final direction from our elected officials, so that we can take the last couple of months before we bring a certified budget to you. Based on my review of your charter, a capital improvement plan is, is part of that process, it's written in your charter, it requires a public hearing, just like a TNT hearing. So I would, I would emphasize doing a capital improvement plan prior to that TNT hearing, 'cause, 'cause it's gonna incorporate things in the plan that wouldn't be in the budget. I would tell you that in the capital improvement plans, it's the same process. Sit down individually, you have a five-year plan, that's what you have designated in your charter, so we're doing an update of that five-year plan. I ask the same questions of, of the departments. Defend your assets. When do they need to be replaced? What are the costs? How are you gonna fund them? Put that in information that we can, we can put together in that five-year plan, and we take that again through a, a public hearing, and then ultimately get approval by the board. But we want to approve the five-year plan prior to the budget, because again, they relate to each other. So essentially, that is how I take a process through budget. You can, you're gonna hear me repeating this a lot. Collaborative, collaboration with department heads, ongoing public review, benchmarking of other government units, reviewing legislative platforms to see what's gonna hurt or help us that's related to our budgets.
And can I just ask for the clarification?
Please.
You know, the last part of it is, including any challenges you faced when you've addressed them. Is there anything specific you could share with us on that?
We'd be happy to. You know, I think, one of the things that we struggle with in any government unit, and you're feeling it as elected officials as well, is with the, with the high cost of inflation, and the high cost of living, and individuals are having to make tough choices in their households, businesses are having to make tough choices as they run their business, and they expect government unit to make tough choices as well. We, a lot of times, don't produce a product. What we do is, we invest taxpayer money, we produce a service. So the one thing that, I start with that, only because my philosophy has always been to try to find revenue streams to mitigate tax levy dollars when you can. And the one of the things that was presented to Becker County was ARPA funds. We received about $8.6 million in ARPA funds. And, you know, there was a lot of discussion about what we're gonna spend this, spend this money on, and what I recommended to the board, and which they approved, is, let's put together an actual plan. Becker County doesn't have a capital improvement. They do now, but they didn't before. Let's put together a plan on what we're gonna fund, and can we, can we, can we make the priority of the investments that we make, the purchases that we make, they'll have a return. Not a return on the levy being lower for that year, 'cause remember, if you lower the levy cost by spending some ARPA dollars, you just gotta make it up the following year. So let's spend ARPA dollars on something that will create revenue for us. Increase productivity, lower the cost of government. And we invested a lot of money in new software upgrades for budget management, for payroll, for human resources candidate review. We lowered the cost and removed the labor-intensive nature of how we were doing things in the past, to improve the service to the constituents, to those applicants, but also at the same time, produced a product that could get work done effectively, but at the same time, could allow us to do a lot of more creative things from a budgetary standpoint and a wage management standpoint.
Thank you. So the follow-up question is, please provide specific examples of how you've improved finance departments during the previous leader, during your previous leadership roles. Sounds like you've said a little bit about that, but if you wanted to...
Yeah, I'd be happy to expand on it. Well, one of the things that I've, I've always emphasized is, with every government unit where I've been an administrator, I've been administrator of Becker County, county administrator at Millelacs County, a city administrator at the city of Moose Lake, every single government unit had a better budget and compliance when, when I left than when, when I took over. And that was a team approach. I can't take 100% full credit. That was a collaboration, that was engaging our elected officials, having them buy into new ideas. One of the things that I'm very proud of is, the credit rating for all three of those government units also improved. For all three of those government units, it went from double A to double A plus. And that's reflective of managing fund balances appropriately, enterprise funds appropriately, meeting the statutory requirements of the budget, both at the state level and county policy. And that created the opportunity. It's also a part of advocacy. When we were generating a geo bond for Becker County for their new highway building, you have to go before Standard and Poor and get a credit review. And so you step before them, and you review their budgets and their fund balances. The one thing I emphasize to them, that I've got them to believe, because it's accurate, is, is that even though Becker County is considered a rural county, I call it a rural county on steroids, meaning it has a lot of economic development potential, a lot of different industries in there. And after I presented the research to them, they agreed. And so that's one of the few counties that's ever reached double A plus. They never usually get there. In fact, our financial manager at Springsteen was really pleased on how we presented that. So at the end of the day, that lowered the cost of bonding. Get a higher credit rating, you pay less on debt service. So, being innovative on, on certain revenue funds, will be my last response, is, you know, local office and sales tax at Moose Lake, I've helped bring that to a conclusion. That takes a lot of referendum and legislative review. Millelacs County did not have a local office sales tax for their roads. When I came onboard, their roads were in serious disrepair. It was the only mechanism to address the roads. The board wasn't interested in it, but I asked them, give me a chance to, let's go on this journey together. It's not a difficult process like a city government, where you've gotta go down to the legislature, testify, get approval for a referendum, do a referendum, go back to the legislature. All we need to do is have a public hearing and vote. And I brought in U of M extension with, with the board's approval, and based on that review, 70% of the revenue generated from a one-half of 1% sales tax, 70% was gonna get paid for by people that don't live in the county, but use the roads. So when it got down to a public hearing, the citizens are like, if it's a choice between raising my property tax levy and a volunteer sales tax, pick the sales tax. And the board voted for it, and we implemented. And so, these are innovations that maybe other administrators don't think about, but I like to think about those, because it was a way to bring, keep the levy low and meet the needs of our citizenry within that county.
How would you measure your success at the end of a workday? What makes you feel like you've had a productive and fulfilling day?
I feel if I've, if I've responded to every call that day, that I've entertained every meeting where someone has not needed to meet with me. Anytime someone leaves me a voicemail, I make a point in my career that they get a call back that day. That, that's, that's, that's my low bar for saying it's been a good day. But I think by, since I engage my employees in my direct reports, if I'm seeing productivity, I'm seeing, I'm seeing people working hard, I'm, I'm seeing good effort. I'm seeing individuals that wanna be working, they wanna be in the office, they wanna interact, they wanna be part of solving a problem. When all those things are happening, and they happen under my administration, every day is a good day. And even when there are problems, we're still communicating, we're still respectful of each other, and it's still about trying to solve a problem. I know, there is no no in me in solving a problem. There's always a way to get it. I mentioned Millelacs County, no one ever thought of doing a local office and sales tax, because they didn't wanna do a sales tax. Tax is a bad word. But going on the journey and communicating and providing information and benchmarking, people opened up and reconsidered it. So it's, what I really enjoy doing with my employees is giving them the environment to succeed. I'm a big believer in employees, other than my direct reports, is to provide constructive feedback. They should be able to come to me and say, Pat, based on my experience, what you're doing is not good, and it, there may be some problems. I'm fine with that. I think that's great. If I can't defend it, then we shouldn't be doing it. And so that's the environment, that's the leadership that I like to bring. And like I said, that's, every day has got an issue. Every day's got a problem. But at the same time, I really want people leaving happy, that they've worked hard, happy to be in that team membership, and know that they're respected and they're appreciated.
Thank you. Describe your experience in assessing the structure of an organization and recommending changes to the organizational structure, which promotes efficiency and the philosophy of continuous improvement. That's a long one, so I can...
No, 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 I think I got it, but would it be best if I could, as an example, can I bring that up, or do you want my whole, kind of my history doing that? Maybe both?
It's up to you.
I'll do both, okay.
Just so you know, it's, we have 17 more minutes.
Well, no, then I'll be, I'll be efficient.
10 more.
Thank you, counselor, I'll be, I'll be efficient. I've spent 23 years on, on continuous improvement teams, putting together collaborative teams of bargaining units, non-bargaining units, working together and solving issues and problems. It's the best way of getting things done. You vet things early, you, you're, you're picking the brain of the experts in those areas, and you, and you solve problems. I think the one very quick example I can give to you is at Becker County. We had four years when I came onboard of high insurance rates. We had PEAP as an insurance plan, the Public Employee Insurance Plan, significant insurance increases based on utilization rates. Putting together a collaborative team of bargaining unit members, non-bargaining units, supervisors, we put together a wellness strategy and an insurance plan that in, after my first year, our insurance costs only went up 5%. Out of 87 counties, we were the only county that was 5%. Every other county was over 5%. And my second year, we did an RFP, and our insurance went, was reduced by 20%. All our insurance, our medical benefits, and that was based on that collaborative working together, doing RFPs, establishing a best practice approach to, to succeed.
Thank you. Please describe a time when you set a goal for yourself, did you reach it, but you did not reach it. What challenges did you encounter?
I think the biggest challenge I had at Becker County when I started there was, there was a lot of non-compliance going on. I'll just give you a few examples. You know, the personnel policy had not been updated for, for decades, hadn't been revised, haven't been updated. Job descriptions hadn't been updated for 40 years. There were, wage tables hadn't been updated for 40 years. And, you know, those are just a small... you know, those are just a small, we had, nobody had done exit interviews. So when someone leaves, you don't know why they left, because we didn't do exit interviews. There was no onboard training. When I entered that type of culture, I could see that we needed to improve some things. And when you put all those things together, not surprisingly, there are some behavioral issues that are occurring. So we moved on all fronts and all those, and I'm happy to say we succeeded on all those fronts. But the personnel policy, we did not make as much progress as I would have liked. It was a very slow approach, where the board was just not able to approve items. We did our best to benchmark, establish best practices, make those recommendations publicly to the board, but it was very slow, very slow. We couldn't, we just couldn't get the work done. We did our best to show what the consequences of not getting that work done, some of the liability issues, and we never got there in my tenure. We got there on all the other things that I mentioned, but not there. And I, I made it very clear that you are exposing yourself. So do what you can to get that work done. But all those other things that I mentioned, we did get done, and I'm very proud of that.
Can you explain when you said that you weren't able to, like, what were the challenges that you encountered?
Well, the challenges were, is we would, we would, we would do the benchmarking and establish a best practice language for a certain item in a personnel policy. We'd bring it publicly to the board, and the board couldn't commit to approving any changes. And that would go on for months. And, and again, they're the deciders. And so my goal as an administrator is for, for the elected officials to make an informed decision. So I put everything before you as best I can with a recommendation. But if you don't approve it, you know, there's nothing I can do. Except do my best if there's, if that risk becomes a, an actual issue, to try to mitigate that as best I can.
Thank you. If the city administrator position is offered to you, what factors would most influence your decision to accept?
You know, I, I think, I've done quite a bit of research on the, on the position, and like I said, the charter and the, in the city. I, I really like the core areas you built into your brochure. I guess I would want to reconfirm that that are the priorities of the city council. As an example, economic development. I'm very intrigued. You know, when you get to the administrator level as a county or city administrator, you don't get to do as much economic development as you'd like, because you have direct reports that do that. So I would very interested to know, is, is that truly a core competency that you want the administrator to be involved with, and in what way do you want them to be involved with? You know, the relationships with collective bargaining units and that negotiation, that's something I have quite a bit of experience on. But I think it's very important to appreciate and understand what role the city council would have in that regard. In many cases, as an administrator, I'm the chief legal negotiator. I'm not sure if that would be my position here. I would wanna make sure I was on the same page as the elected officials and what's expected of me. I think the final item would be, you know, with regards to, you know, establishing trust, it was written in there as a core competency. And I think that's a priority, no matter what administrator is. I'd wanna appreciate history, you know? What, what can I learn that maybe wasn't followed in, you know, ten years ago or years ago? What are opportunities to improve? And not being critical of the people before me, but what can we do better in your mind? You're the deciders. I report to you, I serve at your pleasure. I'd be interested in knowing what kind of culture do we need to improve here, what in the relationship and the trust do we need to focus on? It would help me better understand the type of continuous improvement teams, things like that, that we'd need to create.
Thank you. Along with the community development director, the role of city administrator involves advising the city council on economic development opportunities and collaborating with public and private sectors to promote sustainable growth. What is your experience with working with economic development?
So my first sixteen years in my career in public service was economic development. My, but I should start in the private sector. I, I started as a product development engineer and a corporate manager for Honeywell. The reason I bring that up to you is, the reason I left that position and got into economic development was because jobs were leaving, like this country and going overseas. I didn't like that, and I wanted to change that. And so I ended up separating abicably with Honeywell, and I ended up getting my first job as an executive director of a private nonprofit corporation doing economic development in Chippewa County. A lot of manufacturing and technology in that county, was very successful in creating jobs and tax revenue and wealth. And then subsequently, I did regional economic development. I did eight years in my home county, starting a economic development department. I was a county department head. I was the executive director of the County Economic Development Authority, Housing Redevelopment Authority. You have an equivalent authority here at, at the, at the city of Crookston. So those first sixteen years were all about wealth creation. Jobs, tax revenue, writing grants, housing, land development, things like that. When I got into administration, it was really having those direct reports report to me, but I will tell you, my definition of economic development is wealth creation. If I can reduce the levy, because we found a funding mechanism to replace that levy, that's wealth creation. If I can find a bond with a lower interest rate, stimulus bond with a lower interest rate than what you would normally pay, that's wealth creation. So I like to measure that in, all those things in me are economic development. And so I have a passion for it, and I've, I've kept, kept that experience with me. Certifications, training in IEDC, National Development Council as an economic development professional. That's sort of my resume on economic development.
Thank you. What is the most pertinent skillset or quality you bring to the Crookston, to Crookston as a city administrator?
Well, I feel I have a very strong financial acumen in getting budgets done correctly and meeting the requirements of what the government body is looking for. I, I believe that I also have shown quite a bit of innovation. Budgets for me don't start, once we approve the budget, we just kinda follow the budget. The goal for me and my direct reports is how can we come under the budget? How can we stay under what you've approved? That's, again, a form of wealth creation. So I, I try to be innovative and proactive in that regard. I think the other skills that I think I bring to the city administrator position is, is my, my people skills and dealing with bargaining units and dealing with conflict resolution and dealing with negotiation. I, I treat individuals across the table with respect, and I, but I also tell them very directly. I'm representing the government, you're representing the bargaining unit. We may not agree on things, but I believe that you deserve to get paid what the market says you should get paid. And if you can show me data that doesn't say that, then we have an easy negotiation. Because that's what I'd be bringing to the city council. I think the final thing that I bring to the table very successfully is just my project management skills. I've been involved with a number of building and facility projects, complex projects, bond issues, you know, going through legislative platforms with our legislatures, developing platforms, getting revenue back to the government unit that I serve in some mechanism. So I think all those things, I think, make me an exceptional administrator for this position.
Thank you. Effective collaboration between the city administrator and the city council is essential for efficient functioning of local government. Please share your approach to maintaining a productive working relationship with the city council, ensuring open communication.
Well, what I like to do when I start a position with the council's approval, I like to meet with each one of you one-on-one on a monthly basis for a few months. I wanna start developing a relationship with you, and, and I wanna appreciate what you wanna see in your city, what you wanna see in your ward, the innovations, the issues that you would like to see, what are your priorities? And again, those are, in my mind, are just ways for us to interact and exchange information. And my goal here is to try to put together a cohesive strategy that I can bring back publicly for the city to review. I think it's very important with just about any item, unless the statute of the charter says otherwise, discuss it publicly. The one-on-one meetings really are more about me, you know, learning from you and understanding what your expectations are. But at the same time, I'm a big believer in, in committees that have elected officials on them, but also bringing things to the entire city council for consideration and review. I think the other item that, that I think is important is to make sure that, you know, I know how I'm being measured. No one likes to, you know, and when your annual review comes up, be surprised. And when I sit down with my direct reports and I meet with them monthly, they could write their own review in twelve months. They know the good that they're doing, the bad that they're doing. I'd wanna know how I'm being accountable to you as a city council. There's much more of you than I'm used to, and it's very important that I engage you on, on all those fronts and make sure that we have a very positive relationship based on productivity and accountability.
Thank you. How do you effectively delegate authority and responsibility to employees while maintaining appropriate levels of accountability and operational control?
Well, with any project that gets assigned to a direct report, I like to put a simple project plan together. And, and why I like to do that is it, it really is more, in my mind, an agreement between me and my direct report. Here are the, here's the project that you've been assigned. Here's the responsibility that you have. Let's work out what the tasks are, the twenty tasks that are gonna take place during that time period. What is the cost of each task, who's responsible for it? You know, when it's going to get done. And by meeting regularly with my direct reports, we can continue to review that project plan, change it, modify it if we need to, but we continue to review it. And it really is an agreement. It really keeps, from my standpoint, the ability to second-guess or be confused what was expected. It is documented, it is there. And they are the champion of that project. The goal is for them to implement it. My goal is to make sure they're meeting the schedule, and they're in compliance from a personnel standpoint and things like that. But I support them in their project. But I think doing those type of project plans takes a little time in the beginning, but saves a lot of time at the end, and it eliminates a lot of potential risks that can occur by talking through the tasks it takes to get a project done.
Thank you. As a city administrator, you would play a pivotal role in overseeing various HR functions. What strategies do you employ to ensure effective operation of a city workforce?
Well, you know, I'm gonna expand on the, when I talked about the one-on-one meetings with my direct reports. And one of the things I, that I talk with them about is not only, you know, what's expected of them, what, and what measures that I'm going to measure them on their performance. But I try to instill that for them to do that with their direct reports. And it starts with meeting with, with your employees on a regular basis. It can be monthly. It can be group meetings, a peer review meetings, but it can be one-on-one. But continuing to communicate, setting expectations, putting together performance measures, engaging employees on what their opinion is. What are the issues that they see when they're driving the truck, or they're working in a facility, or they're in an office? Are there ways that, do they have any ideas? What are issues that are occurring with them? I think keeping that communication is, is very important. I'm always interested in knowing what the career path of an employee is as well. As a, in my direct reports, do you always wanna be in this position? I see from your, your personnel file, you've got a degree in this. Could we exploit that a little bit more? How can we expand and overlap the responsibility of our employees? I think that's very critical. It fills in the blanks when someone is sick, if someone is terminated and someone leaves. So I think cross-functional training, continued communication, evaluating what their viewpoint is. I think all are components in a puzzle of peep, of keeping employees happy in the workplace and at the same time engage, and it really solves human resources issues, because it prevents them from starting, instead of trying to fix them. You are creating that relationship where they, they wanna provide constructive feedback. And you, and you should recognize them for that. I think that's the final piece, I would say. Recognize employees for the good work that they're doing.
Wonderful. The next question is a little silly, but we're still gonna ask it. If you could be any animal, what would you be and why?
I wish you'd say a tree, because I would've solved it right there. But I, I guess, it's a great question. And, and I thank you for it, because it's very unique. I've never been asked that before. I'm a, I'm a big fan of cats. I mean, I've got, I had five cats, I'm down to three. But I guess I think I'd like to be a cat, because, and the reason why is, you know, cats, you know, can, can certainly work together as a team. They can hang out with each other, they can hang out with other animals. They also don't have to. They can also be on their own, and they can survive just fine. They've got the skills to survive and live and, and, but they're also, they can be very aggressive, but they also can be very cautious. I think, as I observe my cats, before they make a move, they know what they're doing, they thought it through, and now they're gonna go, they're gonna go for it. So the answer is a feline, so.
Wonderful. Thank you for that, humoring us. What additional information would you like to provide, which might not have been covered thus far in the interview? And are there any major points about your background you would like to emphasize?
Sure. Well, you know, I think you've been thorough in your questions. I think your brochure was fairly thorough. You've asked a lot of questions during the online interview as well. I think there was, you know, quite a bit of discussion on my exit from Becker County. I certainly can expand on that if you want, but I did that during the, the video interview. I proactively provided both past and present Becker County commissioners and department heads beyond other elected officials from previous jobs that I've encouraged you to reach out to. I worked very hard for that county, and I'm, I'm sorry that I'm still not there. But I'm very pleased on what I accomplished there in the over two years that I was there. When I talked about all the deficiencies and the non-compliance that was occurring, I walked into a culture, in a culture that had been going on for decades of non-compliance and, and not following rules. And so I solved the vast majority of that. And that wasn't an easy thing to do, but we did it collaboratively and as a team. But like I said, I, I, I hold no negative feelings about any government unit that does that. The fact is, is my relationship continues with many of those commissioners and department heads. They call me and ask me a question about a budget or a project, or my advice. I'm happy to provide that information to them. I want them to succeed. And, you know, the statute's very clear, at least at the county level. You could have a good reason or a bad reason or no reason to let someone go. You don't have to have a reason. But I'm very pleased to say that when you see my, the revised resume I provide you, there is a history of success at Becker County and in the previous counties that I've served. So I'm very pleased about that. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm always happy to answer those questions if anybody has them.
Wonderful. Thank you. We have four minutes left. Is there anything else, or anything else the council wanted to ask?
How was your trip around Crookston?
How was it? Well, it was my second trip. I was, I did a trip by myself, and then it was actually good that there was a second trip, because I, I missed some things that I wouldn't have seen. I was instructed that you have the oldest tree in the state of Minnesota. I took a photo of it. I, I'm gonna verify that.
I was not aware of that.
What's that?
I was not aware.
Oh, yes, yeah, apparently, yeah. And I don't know what species it is, but it's a big tree.
It's cottonwood.
It is?
Yeah.
Cottonwood makes sense. That's, that's, those, those, those trees will die hard. They, they live long. But to answer your question, Counselor, I, I had a, it was a great experience. What I, what I really got out of it is, you have a city that has just about everything a citizen would want. I'm very pleased for this size city, that you have a community pool, that you have the parks that you have. You, you, it's amazing the number of parks that you have. And it's such a beautiful place, I'm sure, to work. I'm, I know it's probably a beautiful place to live, although I can't, I can't give you an answer on either one of those, but I know based on my windshield review, I can see why people want to live here. And, and, you know, not to say you don't have challenges. I mean, the, the fact is, is you're a, you're a smaller city, and you've got, you know, much larger cities, you know, not too far away from you. And so you've gotta have your own brand and, and what you want to do. And, and I think the one value that I bring to the table is the community-based planning that I've done in other government units. And I know you've done some of that, but the fact is, is always reviewing what you have to offer as amenities and really what you want your city to be in the decades into the future, you know? Growth for growth's sake creates a lot of problems. So strategic growth is what I would emphasize for the city of Crookston. And that's done through a very public, community-based planning process. And, but it's a beautiful city. And, and I actually, the one thing that I was surprised about, and please don't count this against me, is I thought there would be fewer trees. I was ignorant. And I, I just expected I'm gonna be driving in and I'm not gonna see any trees. There's plenty of trees, including the oldest tree. So it's, it's a beautiful city, and the position is a wonderful opportunity, and I appreciate your questions, and I I hope you give me every consideration.
Thank you, Pat. We appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you.
We have a lot of trees in Worth.
Yes, you do.
All right. Thanks for your time, Pat.
Thank you. And I'll, yeah, thank you. Can I shake everyone's hand?
We're going to do a little introduction here. I'm Dale Stanbrook. I'm the mayor of Crookston.
I'm Henry Fisher. I'm the councilperson for Ward Two.
Hi, Henry.
Hi, I'm Kristi Jurdie. I'm the councilperson for Ward One.
Hi, Kristi.
Hi, I'm Morgan Hibba. I am the council member at large.
Hi, Morgan.
Hey, Mark, welcome. I'm Tim Madark and I'm at large special member.
Hi, Tim.
Hi, I'm Delain Clot. I'm a council member for Ward Six.
Hi, Delain.
Welcome. I'm Don Cavalier, Ward Four.
Hi, Don.
Wonderful. So, Mark, we have a couple of questions for you, I believe thirteen to be exact. And so I'll go ahead and read them off. If you need us to re-ask the question, we're happy to do that. Some of them are a little bit longer, so feel free to ask. But we'll go ahead and get started. So our first question is, what do you know about the community of Crookston and what do you believe the community's top three goals should be?
Okay, um, what I know about the city of Crookston is just a 30,000-foot view of the city. I've been through Crookston a couple times, but I certainly am not a, you know, an expert on the area. To be honest with you, total disclosure, I live in the southeast part of the state. So what I do know is that it's a regional center, that it's got a, you know, I think a nice downtown. I'm a big, I, I really like old historic downtowns, so I like the downtown. And I know that it's a community that has been in population decline. So I'm going to probably kind of repeat a couple of these things when you ask me what the top three challenges are. But I think that the top three challenges are, number one is to get a full staff. As I look at things right now, finance and HR, IT, those are just some positions I've heard that are open. I may not have the, all of that totally correct, but, so to me, that's, that's critically important, is to have a full team for the, you know, city staff. I think the next thing I would look at would be the downtown area. I feel that, you know, a healthy downtown is key to trying to attract new residents and retain existing residents. And so there's a lot of different directions and a lot of things that probably have been tried, that I've been involved with in some of my communities and maybe some things that haven't been. I would like to work with the chamber, if there's a downtown group, to see. I'm one that's going to advocate coming in and listening first, instead of coming in thinking I've got answers. Really, my answer is that I want to listen and then try to work with the other strategic partners to develop a plan for the downtown, a strategic plan. Critically important. And then I think the third thing is going to be trying to reverse population loss. And I know that's a multifaceted and a very tough animal monster to try to, you know, it's, it's not an easy situation. But I guess to me, those would be the top three things that I would want to address just as an outsider looking in.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate you sharing that. As a city administrator, you will be responsible for overseeing the finance department. Could you walk us through your process for developing and managing municipal budgets, including any challenges that you faced and how they were addressed?
Well, my, in all my, in all my previous positions, my four cities, I've coordinated the development and the administration of the budget for all four communities. Basically, my approach to budgeting is that it's a collective effort, that it starts with the departments and then works through the finance staff and through the administrator up to the city council. So from a basic process standpoint, and this isn't one-size-fits-all, but generally how I've approached developing a budget is, first of all, is, you know, obviously monitoring the budget throughout the year. Some cities I've been in have budget committees that meeting, review the budget, other cities don't. But basically, the budget for the upcoming year is, first starts with the finance director and I, working with each department, sitting down with each department and going through their needs and their, what they feel, you know, they want to see changes in their budget for the upcoming year. That information is then taken and the finance director and myself will work on putting together a draft budget. We'll look at that, see what the impacts are, what revenues are needed, what, you know, the total proposed expenses look like. We may try to work that a little more with the departments. And then we will bring a draft budget to the council during, usually it's a couple work sessions and a bigger community, maybe more than that. And like I say, if there's a budget committee, some of this may be an ongoing process over the, throughout the year. The budget is then taken to the September public meeting and then ultimately, you know, depending on what inputs received from the public, then you work from September through the end of the year to come up with a final budget that would be adopted in December. Now, some of the things that I look at that go into the budget would include capital improvement plan. Part of the capital improvement plan that I've had in two cities has been a 10-year infrastructure improvement plan. I understand that Crookston's in the middle of that, but their city engineer right now and Bolton and Mankas putting together an assessment of all the infrastructure, which is what I did in Kenyon, what I also did in Pine Island with Woods Seth, actually, but Bolton and Mankin for whatever that's worth in Kenyon, and came up with a 10-year plan, worked closely with Public Works and Utilities and identified, you know, prioritized a list of all the streets, all the sewer, storm sewer, water, et cetera, all the infrastructure. And then from that, the council had one or two work sessions and came up with a list of 10, over, and generally say over a 10-year period of projects that they would do. We also tied this very closely in with our financial advisor and our auditors to make sure that we didn't, you know, blow increases, you know, that we didn't have large increases to the levy, large increases to utility funds, et cetera. So all those things go into, you know, trying to determine which projects can be done and how quickly you can do them. The projects are, are put in a ranking system based on need and then you have to figure out how to pay for them. So that's a step-by-step process through, again, strategic planning and you come up with a, so anyway, the, the 10-year plan, I didn't mean to talk five minutes about that, but that's part of the capital improvement plan and that's a lot of what goes into the budget also. You know, we have, you know, utility rate studies. We try to have utility rates projected out for five, seven years, maybe longer, so that, again, we don't have, you know, large, too large of increases to those. But all those things go into the revenue, into the budget. And so it's a, but it's a collective process. I have to emphasize that, you know, I lean very heavily on the, on the departments and the finance director, you know, if there is one, or the finance person, to try to come up with a budget that not only is for that year, but we also try to go out maybe three years and look at, you know, expenses and revenues so we have a better handle on each year as it comes up, so.
Thank you. And on a follow-up question to that, can you provide specific examples of how you've improved finance departments during your previous leadership roles?
I've improved the finance department or the position of the city?
Examples of how you've improved the finance department during your previous leadership?
Well, the best way I can improve a finance department is by basically having and continuing open lines of communication between the departments, myself and the finance department. That is by far the most important, you know, step that needs to happen as far as being successful. It all really comes down to having strong communications, having, you know, basically most, the example I would use is just basically that departments in all the cities I've been in can approach a finance director, can approach me with ideas, with problems, with equipment breakdown, whatever it is, and we can work with them very closely to try to come up with solutions that are going to, you know, keep them running, but also are the most cost-effective. I mean, I will say I haven't done like wholesale changes to most of the finance departments I've been involved with because I've had good staff, long-term staff, and I, and I haven't, there hasn't been a need for that. But I always look at all departments, you know, carefully and if I see, you know, where, where I will make changes will be a lot of times with maybe functions that maybe the clerk was doing, for instance, in Kenyon, the clerk used to do payroll and I moved that to the finance director. So that would be one example. And so I will look at, you know, just functions more than anything else to try to make more efficient sense. And a lot of that, again, is just listening to the staff because they usually have about 90% of the issues and 90% of the solutions, and it's just a matter of being of, being there to, to carry those to fruition, so.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Mark, how do you measure success at the end of a workday? What makes you feel like you've had a productive and fulfilling day?
By the people I work with, by the conversations that I have with my employees and my department heads, and by issues that get solved. Most of the things that we deal with on a day-to-day basis are just day-to-day issues. If they're larger projects, we're hoping at the end of the day that they're going to be one step closer to fruition. But the, the thing that I look at on a daily basis, the most important, is just that I've been able to follow up when I need to, that I've been able to, you know, have the needed conversations with department heads, with elected officials, board of commission members, community members, whatever it is, in a timely manner to kind of keep things moving ahead. So really, on a day-to-day basis, a lot of what I look at as being successful is just the interactions I've had on a daily basis and, and looking at those interactions and feeling like I was able to, you know, either get issues solved or to address problems or at least to, you know, start to disseminate information, whatever the situation is. And it all comes down to having, again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but that I've built up trust with the people I work with and that I've got, you know, solid lines of communication with them.
Thank you so much. Could you describe your experience in assessing the structure of an organization and recommending changes to the organizational structure, which promotes efficiency and the philosophy of continuous improvement?
Well, every city that I've gone into, one of the first things that I do in the first six months is to, really to look at the organization structure, look at all of the departments, look at their functions, and, you know, try to assess whether they're, you know, the function the most efficiently they could be, and if not, then working with the parties involved to try to improve how they do things, streamline operations. Look at, you know, expenditures are a big part of looking at operations and efficiency and, you know, as an administrator, trying to come back with better ways of doing functions and doing, you know, the roles that the departments carry out on a daily basis. So for me, again, organizational improvement is continual improvement and I always, you know, am looking at how other cities do things, you know, looking at just my colleagues and networking and those are all things that I bring into when I come into an organization and try to look at, is there better ways for an organization that they could be run? But I always do everything in a manner that is, you know, working very closely with the department, taking in their, you know, taking their input into account as, you know, as much as possible. As a new administrator, I always lean very heavily on the departments and, you know, try to learn as much as I can from them. But that is kind of the beginning of doing an organizational assessment, you know, as an administrator. You really can't assess an organization very effectively until you know for a period of time how it runs, the, the persons involved. And so really, a lot of the organizational, you know, change, improvement that I would look at is going to be kind of down the road. I don't mean years down the road, but certainly, you know, more than six months maybe down the road. Because I think, in all fairness, you really have to, as a new administrator, give all the departments, you know, your attention, listen to what their issues are before you really can dive in and, and come in with a agenda about what you want to change. Because to me, I'm not agenda-driven, I'm just trying to come in and keep an, keep the organization moving ahead efficiently, but at the same time, keeping an eye on, you know, the operations of, of each department and trying to find if there are better ways, work with them to, to do their jobs and do their functions more efficiently.
Thank you. Can you please describe a time when you set a goal for yourself but did not reach it? What challenges did you encounter?
Okay, so, one of the goals that I've, you know, tried to have in all my communities has been improving technology, looking at software, looking at networks, especially with network security. In my current position, one of the goals that I set, this is a goal that I set kind of before COVID, and I will say that my goal was to get improvement to the city's, you know, IT functions globally within about a 12 to 20 more, four-month period. And this goes with, this includes everything from the city's wireless network to the city's servers, to the city's public Wi-Fi, to software that we use on several different fronts, including financial, improving the broadcast of the city, streaming of the city's council meetings, improving the city's website, making it more user-friendly. And I guess I kind of had a thought that it would be completed, maybe it would say within 24 months, and it ended up taking more like about five years. And so what I learned from that, I guess, was there may have been some of the parts of that, without going into each item, that could have been completed sooner, but really, I think I should have probably been more realistic with my timeline of not only getting the improvements done, but also being able to pay for them, so.
Thank you. If the city administrator position was offered to you, what factors would be most influencing your decision to accept? Um, if the city administrator position was offered to you, what factors would be most influencing your decision to accept?
Um, I guess the factors I would look at would be um. Uh, would be the, you know, as far as the community goes, I'm, I'm definitely interested in the position. Looking at the different elements of the community, different organizations. Um, I think that, you know, the pay range is not an issue with me, so that, that wouldn't be an issue. Um, I would look at, I, you know, I've looked at a lot of the things as far as like living here, housing. Um, and I, and I think, you know, housing is affordable, so I don't think that would be an issue. Um, I think I would probably look um, at, you know, obviously a final offer that any of the candidates get. You know, is gonna be probably the biggest thing that somebody's gonna look at and obviously we don't have that in front of us. So I think that's probably gonna be the, you know, just looking at the details of an agreement is probably about as. The only thing I would say that I would have left, I think right now, as far as thinking about if I would accept the position. But I've looked a lot at the community, you know, as best I can from a distance and also just on the last day. Since coming here yesterday, looking at the city website, minutes, newspaper. Um, I haven't seen a lot of things that really scare me off, so I don't have any red flags that stand out right now to me. Um, as far as the way the city looks, how the operations of the city are going, so. Um, I think it really would just kind of come down to the final details of, of an offer, so.
Wonderful, thank you. Along with the community development director, the role of city administrator involves advising the city council on economic development opportunities. And collaborating with public and private sectors to promote sustainable growth. What is your experience with working with economic development?
I have extensive experience working with economic development. I think if you look at my background, you'll see that um, that's probably my strongest single area is, is economic development. I was an economic development director for ten years for a county, for an HRA, EDA, similar to what Crookston has. I've also been the, basically the EDA staff in all the city administrator positions I've been involved with. Um, I have a wide range of background in all areas of economic development. Um, you know, tax, economic financing, um, business retention, expansion, industrial park and expansion. Um, looking at um, you know, just uh, redevelopment of sites. I've got extensive experience with that, both in downtowns and in the edges of, or the outer areas of a community. Um, so I've got a wide range of, 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 of ED experience that I think would be helpful for this position. I've also served on economic development, board for the county for two years. I was also on National League of Cities, um, committee of, community development, economic development. Um, committee, national committee, served with, I don't know, twenty five other cities. So I think I've got a, a real good handle on economic development and I think that would be one of my strengths coming into this, into this position.
Thank you. What is the most pertinent skill set or quality you bring to the, to Crookston as a city administrator?
I think um, my strength, my most important strength as far as being a city administrator is going to be. Um, the ability to develop um, strong relationships with council members, with elected officials, with department heads, with. Uh, members of the community. Um, I think, you know, being a, I think I'm an approachable manager, I think I'm a, not, not a micromanager. Um, so I think that I'm able to build, you know, strong relationships with both the city. Um, partners, elected officials, department heads, and also stakeholders in the community. Um, townships, counties, um, you know, University of Minnesota, um, other partners that, that are involved in the city. Um, I think that I would be able to, you know, work with those folks early. I would go out and meet them as soon as I could and I would work to develop, you know, strong communication with them. Because this is ninety percent of being able to deal with issues that come up is, is being approachable. And being there when outside partners need to, or citizens or elected officials need answers. Or need to approach um, you that, that they feel like they can call you anytime and they feel that they can talk to you frankly. And so those are things that I would bring to the position and I think those are my, would be, are very, those are important. Traits to have to be successful as a, as a city administrator.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Effective collaboration between the city administrator and the city council is essential for effec- if, efficient functioning of local government. Please share your approach to maintaining a productive working relationship with the city council, ensuring open communication.
Well, basically, it, it has to start with, you know, again, developing those informal relationships with. You know, the council members and the mayor. Um, it's basically having, you know, frequent communication with them, keeping them updated on issues. And um, again, it, a lot of it really comes back to the one on one communication, interpersonal communication being strong. And I think that um, the council members have to believe, even if they're on the wrong side of a, of an issue. That the council's talking about, that at least you as an administrator are gonna listen to them, actively listen to them. And are gonna, you know, treat them fairly. I think those are all traits that go toward building strong, you know, long term, successful communication, successful. Successful relations with, between administrators and councils. So those are items that I work very hard on to maintain, to initially develop and then maintain. And those are things that, that I feel would, you know, allow me to have long term success with. You know, keeping strong and open lines of communication with the council and the mayor.
Thank you. How do you effectively delegate authority and responsibility to employees while maintaining the appropriate levels of accountability and operational control?
Um, well, it, it depends on, in my case, it's, you know, based on my experience. Um, with over twenty five years as being a city administrator. Um, and it's knowing when and where to um, when and where to delegate issues. And knowing when I need to um, deal with issues myself. It really just comes down to my experience over the years. Um, I guess that's the best answer I can, I can give to that. Um, and it's basically knowing again, with effective, you know, communication. And with building that trust that the department heads will be able to give me the proper feedback I need. Because a lot of delegation is sitting down and talking about an issue before actually, you know, having a, made a decision that, okay, you have to do this. Or that department has to do that. It's really sitting down with them and really going through, you know, the whole issue and all sides of it. And then sitting down and saying, are you comfortable doing this or comfortable doing that? You know, there's some more immediate issues, obviously, if it's, if it's more, a lot of it comes down to if it's more. Um, specific to that department, they're gonna take care of it. You know, if I get a call about a broken water main, that's gonna go to utilities department. But if I get a, a resident that calls me about their water quality. Or talks to me about some issue they have with some work that went on in their boulevard that wasn't restored. Um, those are things, those are the kind of issues that I would sit down with the department head and talk about. And then we would determine the best way to approach it. The department head most likely might tell me they will follow up on it. And then, of course, historically, I have to then, you know, kind of make sure over time, collectively speaking, when I delegate items to departments, that they're following up on them. So that's part of the process too. But, you know, it really comes down to the communication I have with the department. Um, that's really gonna determine the success of how that issue's handled. And so it's not something that I as an administrator normally want to come in and say, okay, you're gonna do it this way, blah, blah, blah. It's what do you think of this? What does your experience tell you about this? And then me listening and then collectively, we try to come up with a solution. And that's how ninety five percent of my departmental relations will go almost all the time, so. And again, it all starts with building up that communication and trust with, with the department heads.
Thank you. As a city administrator, you would play a pivotal role overseeing various HR functions. What strategies do you employ to ensure an effective operation of the workforce?
Well, um, on the level of HR, I would require and want to see that all, you know, that I do. You know, reviews, performance evaluations, all, starting with all the department heads on an annual basis. And part of the process is gonna be two way feedback during performance evaluations. And part of the process involves goal setting with the departments. Um, and so the first year is more learning, but subsequently then. Years after that, it's gonna be working with the department through that evaluation process to help them. Uh, you know, make sure that, monitor the progress of them carrying out goals that, you know, we kind of jointly would set up. Um, and then a lot of it is just kind of that weekly communication that we have through department head meetings. And then I would, you know, have a lot of one on one communication with each department head, just on a daily basis or, you know. Times a week or whatever the case might be, it depends on the department and how close they are to me. Cause obviously if a department's next door to me, I'm gonna probably talk to them a little more than, say, the police department that's in a different building. But I want to make sure that I communicate with the police department, you know, especially the first year, multiple times a week. And that, again, a lot of what I'm gonna be doing is listening. Um, but I also expect the department heads are gonna do performance evaluations on all their personnel on an annual basis. And I wanna kind of work with them, especially the first couple of years on that, you know, review those with them. Um, and so that we're all kind of on the same page. Because a lot of the goals that are gonna be spelled out in the department heads' goals in their performance evaluation are gonna be probably carried down to their employees. So, um, you know, I want to be closely um, watching that. And that's probably one of the closest ways that I use to monitor performance. Um, i- is a performance evaluation. I think the most common way though is just gonna be the, just the daily communications that I have with the departments and what they talk to me about. And again, just trying to work to solve issues before they become bigger problems.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next question's a little silly, but I appreciate you humoring us either way.
Nope, it's all right.
Um, if you could be any animal, what would you be and why?
Um. If I was gonna be an animal, I think I would be a bald eagle. Because I think it would be cool to be able to fly at five thousand feet and ride. You know, airstream up and um, kind of be sort of the top of the food chain. Um, and just because I think just the whole idea of flying would be incredible, you know, being able to just fly. So I guess, being a bald eagle, I don't have a real prophetic long answer for that, I'm sorry.
That's great. I don't know if there's a wrong answer to that anyway.
No, but I mean some long, I'm sorry, I don't have that, but.
Well, thank you for that. Um, what additional information would you like to provide for us, which might not have been covered thus far in the interview? And are there any major points from your background you would like to emphasize?
Um, well, I think just collectively speaking, what I would say is I, what I would emphasize is that I've. I think I've worked with about every type of issue and every type of personality that there probably is as far as elected officials. As far as department heads and just city employees. I've worked with a multitude of boards and commissions on just about every level. Um, I've worked with just about every state agency, a lot of federal agencies. Um, I've worked with county boards and townships in all my positions. Um, I think I've had, you know, I don't know how many different types of issues come up. Um, another thing too, I would emphasize is I've been involved with several natural disasters, floods to be exact. Um, so I, I also want to just emphasize that's something that I've been involved with. You know, working with disasters, working with FEMA, working with um, mitigation, property acquisition, all the things involved with. Pre and post disaster response. Um, and again, my strength of economic development and it, and I know that, you know, the city's got a strong community development. Department, so I would want to work closely with them as an administrator. Um, and again, I would, I've been involved with, you know, many types of social fraternal organizations like Kiwanis, Lions. Rotary, um, chambers of commerce and, and I would do the same in this position. You know, I would, I would be outgoing, I would try to be involved in the community, I would try to be involved, especially with community organizations. Um, so yeah, I guess those are just some of the, some things I would advise, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So that's it for our formal questions. I know Don had one question, or I can ask it on his behalf. Um, is how was your trip around Crookston?
Good, um, I will say that I drove around Crookston a little bit last night. I drove around Crookston this morning. I showed my wife like FaceTime her to downtown and some of the other parts of town. But until I went through the community with Corky and with, I'm sorry, the executive assistant.
Tina?
Tina, thank you, I'm sorry Tina. Um, I just hate forgetting people's names.
No worries.
With Corky and Tina, I really got a really in-depth kind of snapshot of the city. And I saw a lot more things, you know, quality things than I saw myself just driving around. Um, I see, like I said at the beginning, challenges with the downtown, um, you know, challenge with the whole population thing. Loss, loss of population. But I also was really impressed with the, you know, the commercial industrial base of the city. Like, I was really kind of, like, really impressed with the industrial base of the city. And I was, I didn't realize there were so many companies and so much industry in this community. Um, you know, we also saw the university, a lot more there than I guess I thought, looking at the small enrollment. Um, but yeah, you know, I just saw a lot of really good things that, you know, I didn't realize were, were here. So I was very impressed, but I also know that there's, there's challenges that have to be faced too, so I'm not, you know, I'm not. I mean, I'm totally aware of that too, so.
Well, thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mark.
What's that?
Too much paper in front of me. Welcome, Jeff, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Kind of a long road trip.
Oh, it wasn't so terrible, it was a pretty good flight.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate being here, and we're going to introduce ourselves. I'm Dale Stanbrook, I'm the mayor of Crookston.
Henry Fisher, councilperson for Ward Two.
I'm Chris Teegerd, I'm the councilperson for Ward One.
I'm Morgan Hibba, member-at-large.
I'm Tim Menard, and I'm a member-at-large, and welcome.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Delane Claude, I'm councilmember for Ward Six.
I'm Don Cavalliere, councilmember for Ward Four.
Welcome. Thank you, sir.
Wonderful. So, we have a series of questions for you, Jeff, we have 13 actually in all. And so, we'll ask each of the questions, if you have any that you'd like me to repeat, I'm happy to do so, but we'll go ahead and get started.
Absolutely, thank you.
Wonderful. So, what do you know about the community of Crookston, and what do you believe should be the community's top three goals?
Well, what I know, I've been looking at, and I know that, yeah, obviously, the home of University of Minnesota, Crookston, wonderful town, you've got a great core, you've got a great history. The, the priorities right now, economic, housing, I've been watching your meetings, child, childcare is one of the first things that I looked at when I got the call for the interview, was I have a three-year-old daughter, so that's, you know, housing, childcare, those are things that I'm looking at, and I know those are very high on the priority list, and maintaining and expanding our economic development pool. I got into town yesterday afternoon, I looked around, and while we do have a very solid core of very vibrant industries, we also have some room to grow in other, in other areas, in the, in the downtown area as an example. So, there is, there is always room for improvement. But everything that I've seen, Crookston is just a really great, small-town bedroom community outside of Grand Forks, it's close enough, but I just, I love that family-friendly, safest-city vibe that's here. Touring the city with Mr. Reynolds today, and all, and driving around myself, just seeing all of the parks and the amenities that the city offers for the residents, that just shows that this, this council is committed to the residents and the city, and that's, that really struck my, spoke to my core.
Thank you. As a city administrator, you'll be responsible for overseeing the finance department. Could you walk us through your process for developing and managing municipal budgets, including any challenges that you have faced and how you've addressed them?
I'll start with challenges that I've faced. As the city manager for, or city administrator for Madison Lake, I took over the position after five, they had five administrators in five years. The, one of the interims had put the budget together in such a way that allocated wages got double or triple counted, and as a result, they were deficit spending over 20% of their operating budget. So, on short order, it was November when I started, so I had about four to five weeks to redraft the budget, balance it, and work with the department heads to build through. My process is, the first thing that I do is I look at, look at the trends, and items within departments and all that are steadily increasing, steadily decreasing, you can use trend analysis to look at. If they're irregular revenue streams, it requires more, more advanced, it requires a regression analysis to determine what an appropriate budget amount is. And then after I've drafted a rough outline out, sim, virtually, simultaneously, I'm providing department heads with three blank budgets for their departments. And what I'm asking for them is I would like their realistic budget requests for the next year. I want a dream budget of what, if money were no object, what would you like to see? And the third one is, the bare bones, if the apocalypse happens as it did in 2020, and we lose our, lose revenue, what can we do? The reason, my thought process on each one of those is, the dream budget, one, it tells me where the departments are and what their future needs may be. And we can talk about that with the depart, the department head and I can talk about that, and we can talk with the council on that. The bare bones budget gives us a framework for, again, as 2020, if we lose revenue, if we have, if something occurs to the city that we're losing, that we lose revenue, or revenues are not up to where we expect, we now have a template to move forward and keep the city's budget balanced, and use it in a logical, logical manner, so that we're not just looking and slashing and cutting. That way, we have, we have a template and we have a plan. Then I take their budget request and I match it up with what I've come up with, what my thoughts are, and it's a negotiating process with the department heads. Where is it? Of course, you always end up with the prioritization. Every department feels that their department is the most important. So, you then have to pull the big pic, you pull the big picture. Obviously, the strategic plan, the comp plan, and the goals of council, I believe that your budget should match your goals. If the city council's goal is to help improve affordable housing, then our budget should show that that is a goal of ours, that's where we should allocate some money. If we're, if we're, if we have a large increase in something that the council does not have as a stated goal, we should, we should likely discuss that and readdress the budget.
Thank you. As a follow-up question, please provide specific examples of how you've had a depart, or how you have improved finance departments during your previous leadership roles.
Again, in Madison, I can use either of my previous, most recent previous roles. I will, I'll use Madison Lake. When I took over the city, they had fund balances, their finance software. They were in the middle of a transition to Civic Systems, and through the course of that, we ident, Civic Systems was a much more robust platform, and as a result, we had to rewrite the city's chart of accounts, because what they were using was not in compliance with Minnesota standardized chart of accounts. So, in rewriting those charts of account, it allowed us to identify where certain things that had been lumped together should be separated. As an example, they had special pay listed in each department as a potential budget item, but under Minnesota statutes, special pay is limited to police officers. So, in that dissection and reorganization of our budget, we were able to really streamline and get down to the core of what each fund and each account should be. After we wrote those budgets, we then went, and I worked with the finance clerk, and as she was doing the accounting entries every month, I asked her to identify which vendors, which payables, which receivables were going regularly to which accounts, so that we could create it, if you want to say, a cheat sheet. If we had, if she left, if some, anything happened, we now also had a template, so that we could move forward without missing too many beats, without hiccuping too terribly. We could then move forward, because now, when a bill or when something came in, we could look at that, we had a spreadsheet, we could use the search function, and identify which accounts that vendor, or that revenue stream, or that payment normally would go to. And then we can just use common sense and look, say, okay, this is, this is from a vendor that goes to three different things, but in the memo line, we can see which account it goes to. As a result of, and outside of budgeting, we also separated the clerk-treasurer functions from the city administrator, they were combined when I got there. The net result was the city's S&amp;P bond rating was increased from a capped A to an A-plus uncapped, the following year when we bonded for infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. How do you measure your success at the end of the workday, and what makes you feel like you've had a productive and fulfilling day?
Every day it's different. Because we don't know what's going to walk through the door on any given day, that's one of the loves that I have of this career. The, the judge of it, has it been a good day? Have we accomplished something that makes the lives of our residents a little better? Have we moved something forward that's going to help our residents live a little better? Sometimes it's, have we made a baby step? Because some days, it's just, the, the firestorm hits and you feel, at the end of the day, you feel wasted, and you feel like you've been fighting all day to accomplish anything, but you simply say, have I made that baby step forward? Did we get something accomplished? On a bigger picture, there's always, you know, you want to compare yourself to other cities, you want to compare yourself to your peers, to other city managers. Are we doing things the best way that we can? My, one of my core beliefs is, be better today than we were yesterday. Now, we can always say, yeah, we did better, but how do we know? And we know by judging, by matching ourselves to sister cities, to other similar-sized, similar-capability municipalities, so that that way we have a benchmark.
Thank you. Describe your experience in assessing the structure of an organization and recommending changes to the organizational structure, which promotes efficiency and the philosophy of continuous improvement.
Well, when I was at Reddington Shores, I took over, they really had no departmental structure. We had, I organized the city, they had a maintenance department, but it was simply three maintenance workers. During the first budget cycle, I worked with the city commission, or the town commission, to create a maintenance supervisor position, so that that way, there was a responsible party for that department. With the clerk's office, we had the clerk, deputy clerk, and an admin assistant, which were fairly well-structured and well-organized, but our building department was in shambles. Our building department had a single employee. It was our building official. Florida statutes required us to have permit applications back either approved, denied, or for comment within 30 days. He was running 75 days, because he was so overloaded with work. We restructured that department, we hired a permit tech to organize the administrative, and we outsourced some inspections while we evaluated the rest of the operations. Within about 60 days, our permit times were under two weeks, yeah, and we were able to bring the, the inspector into very minimal assistance with the process. So, with Reddington Shores, it was essentially a ground-up circumstance. Madison Lake was more organized, they had their departments already established. That was more just streamlining processes in Madison Lake. The, the way we've always done it, sometimes that's the best answer, but we still have to look at the question of, why are we doing it that way? So, process improvement, continuous improvement, again, always be better tomorrow than we were today, and be actively seeking ways to do that.
Wonderful, thank you. Can you describe a time when you set a goal for yourself and did not reach it, and what challenges you had encountered?
I'm going to use my last post. I may have used this, but the goal, it was not only set by myself, it was set by the commission. They were, I was the first town administrator hired by the town of Reddington Shores since 2005. It was supposed to be a transition over three to, three years, three to five years, to a commit, to a council-manager form of government as a to a commit, to a council manager form of government as a transition away from a commission form of government. I was not successful in that transition. What I learned from that, I was very adamant that everyone, all members of the elected body and staff all needed to be on the same page. And what I learned from that challenge, from that situation was sometimes you have to ensure that people understand what you're asking because the normal human reaction is to agree, even if the understanding is not completely there. And that causes problems down the fut- in the future. So, I did not make, I did not make it a priority to ensure that everyone was truly on the same page when we started. And that, the lesson that I've learned from that is ask for a repeat. If there's any question as to what it, what the understanding is, ask for, what do, what do you feel is the goal that we have? And ask them to articulate it back. And hopefully, with understanding, that goal can, will be articulated back and we can be on the same page. It's very important in a group to have... You, you're not going to have unanimous in most situations because everyone's an individual. But you, if the goals are not the same, you're not going to achieve them. And that was, that was something I did not recognize, that those obstacles were in my place, that I did have commissioners that were not, did not truly understand the release of authority to a town administrator. And it caused a lot of operational issues.
Thank you. If the city administrator position is offered to you, what factors would be, would, will most influence your decision to accept?
I have been going over all of those factors for the last six weeks. I know that childcare is an issue. However, I spoke with a provider in Grand Forks that told me that they will have an opening in about three to four weeks. I know that housing can be an issue. However, I'm very flexible with that. And my, having been a real estate broker, my belief is you want to rent for six months to a year just to get a really good feel for where you are. So, while those are obstacles and challenges, I don't really see them as insurmountable or out of the ordinary. If offered the position, I would absolutely love to bring, help move Crookston forward into the next phase of its future.
Wonderful, thank you. Along with the community development director, the role of the city administrator involves advising the city council on economic development opportunities and collaborating with public and private sectors to promote sustainable growth. What is your experience with economic development?
I have some limited experience, but it's not as an administrator. It was actually as an elected official. I, when I was with the city of Groveland, we moved forward with attracting a Kroger, a Cato robotic distribution center to our industrial park. It provided over 500 very well-paying jobs. And activity begets activity. Wh- when we won that inclusion into our city, within a year, we also attracted an Amazon distribution center. Uh, when I was at Madison Lake, one of the things that we struggled with as a smaller town, how do we have economic growth? What do we do? And one of the things, housing, as Crookston knows, in order to have economic growth, you need to have that workforce and you need to have housing for that workforce. Uh, one of the things that I'm very proud of in Madison Lake is we had a housing development, it was twin homes, that had not had a building permit pulled in over four years. I reached out to the developer, we, we kickstarted that, we renegotiated developer's agreement, and now the housing is moving forward, which allows us to bring more activity. Many people, one of the questions that I used to get as an elected official in Groveland was, when are you going to bring us some more restaurants? We want an Olive Garden, we want this, when are you going to give us a grocery store? And what I had to explain is restaurants are not economic development. Restaurants are examples and symptoms of good economic development. Because when you have good economic development, when you have job, industries that are providing jobs and you have the housing, you have the training, you're going to get the rooftops, and when you get the rooftops, the grocery stores and the restaurants will come. They all have a template that they want the demographics to look a certain way before they look at a community. So, in Madison Lake, we laid the groundwork. Uh, we had a small grocery store, convenience store in town. It was, again, being a small town, it was kind of the one-stop shop in town. The owner's looking at retiring. So, we reached out to Family Dollar. And while in a town the size of Crookston, Family Dollar is not economic development, in Madison Lake, Family Dollar is economic development. It provide, it'll, it would provide jobs and it would provide activity for the residents. So, while I have not been an economic director, I am very familiar with the processes.
Thank you. What would you say is the most pertinent skill set or qualities you bring to Crookston as a city administrator?
Team building, collaboration. I am a firm believer that I do not have all of the answers. But with each of you, and each of these pe- these department heads and staff members sitting in the back, we can come up with the right answers. I have a very positive outlook and I firmly believe that we can be better tomorrow regardless of any challenges that are going to come in front of us. Uh, one of the biggest, like, again, I, I can't emphasize enough, my core belief is be better tomorrow, move forward, find a way. Sometimes you have to think outside the box. Two of the, an example of that is when I was with Groveland, our city manager approached us with an idea. Our city was 2 million gallons a day over our state consumptive use permit and it was going to cost us between four and $5 million to improve that. We bought a golf course instead. The golf course had a 5 million gallon a day active consumptive use permit. We then sold the golf, we bought it for 2 million, we then sold it back to the homeowners that lived in the neighborhood around it because they didn't want it being developed. So, instead of spending four to five million on a new consumptive use permit, we spent 2 million on a golf course and then got a $600,000 rebate off of that. We used the other, the other 3 million gallons we didn't need and we leased it to surrounding cities. Outside the box thinking. It's just, you have to step out, step outside of normal in order to move forward.
Thank you. Effective collaboration between the city administrator and the city council is essential for efficient functioning of local government. Please share your approach to maintaining a productive working relationship with the city council, ensuring open communication.
Well, first and foremost, I have a complete open door policy. If any council member wants to talk, all they have to do is give me a call. There will obviously be times that perhaps I'm in a meeting, something, but the calls, I, I have, again, I have a complete open door policy. I also believe that each council member should get the same information at as close to the same time as possible. That, that's just imperative. If I have to give good news, bad news, or indifferent, it has to be delivered directly. I've been accused in the past of being a little too direct. I've worked, I've tried to work on that. Found that sometimes being too direct comes across as a little brusque. And that's not my intention, it's just, however, listening to the opinions of the members of the council. You hear from your constituents on a very regular basis, just like the staff does when they're out working, uh, just like I do. One of the things that I try to do is walk the city. Obviously, I'm not going to walk every street every day, but if I have to go somewhere, if it's walkable, walk there. It lets me wa- lets me run across people. Gets me to get the vibe, the feel for people's opinions. And then convey that through to the council, to staff. And of course, council has the, is the guiding body for our city.
I have a couple more questions left. How do you effectively delegate authority and responsibility to employees who, while maintaining appropriate levels of accountability and operational control?
Well, the first thing that I have to ask myself, ask, and for the first few months that I'm here, it, it'll be direct asking. But I have to ask myself, do they have the training, the experience, knowledge, and ability to do that, to accomplish this task? If they're missing one of those things, then maybe it's not a full deli- doesn't mean delegation's out of the question. It just means that it's going to require some more assistance on either my part or another staff member's part. The second thing I have to ask is, do they have the authority within their position to complete the task? Because i- it's really frustrating for a staff member to be told, go handle this. You know, if I tell the public works director, hey, I want you to go, or let me rephrase. If I tell the fire, fire chief, hey, go look at your fire equipment, we've got it in the budget, go buy yourself a new fire engine because, and find out which one of your pieces of equipment is the most out of date and go replace it. It's a simplistic example, but he doesn't have the authority to spend a million dollars plus on a tower truck or a ladder. So, asking him to do that just doesn't make sense. So, I have to ask, does, does that person have the positional authority to do it? And then follow, the, with the follow-up, touching base with them. Asking them if they have what they need, asking them about the progress. When, what is an expected completion date? Are they on time, are they on target with the goal that we have moving forward? If it involves multiple departments, make sure the department heads are all communicating with each other so that they can collaborate and move that forward. But it, it all requires regular communication, re- open and regular communication.
Thank you. As a city administrator, you will play a pivotal role in overseeing various HR functions. What strategies do you employ to ensure the effective operation of the city's workforce?
First and foremost, I am an absolute advocate of succession planning. And it's, it's something that, even though a position may not be, we have to be able to grow our people and trust our people that, give them the training that they need, become the employer of choice in the area. At, in recruitment, you want people to want to come and work for, you know, for us. As far as being able to recruit, train, we just have, we have to make sure that we have a, an internal pipeline. And if we don't have a, just have a backup plan. There are going to be hiccups, but you, you want to minimize the hiccups for our operations. An example of that, when I was at Madison Lake, I asked each one of my department heads, what can I do to help you grow in your position? How can I help you do your job better? They all told me various answers, my city clerk wouldn't answer me. It took me three weeks to get her to answer me. And finally, when she answered me, she said, well, sir. I said, stop, sir, I'm Jeff. She said, well, Jeff, you're not going to be here forever. Well, that's probably true, I could get hit by a bus tomorrow. She goes, well, when you leave, I want to put in for your job legitimately. So, we talked and I found out what her background was, what her experience was, what her level of knowledge was. And I said, well, you're not there yet. And she says, I know. So, over the course of the next two and a half years, when possible, I mentored her. I gave her projects to do. I gave her reading assignments. I'm kind of a little bit of a geek, I still have all of my old college textbooks. So, I took some of my old public administration readings and I highlighted them and said, here, take two weeks, read these, come back, we'll talk about it. I am proud to say that when I did leave Madison Lake, we advertised the position, we got 17 or 19 applicants. We reduced it to three for final interviews. And in open interviews, the city council selected the clerk as the most qualified. So, that, that was my, that was really the, the strongest thing that I can say is, she had been a clerk for nine months when I took over the job. And over the course of two and a half years, by mentoring her and providing projects and guidance, two years later, she's still running the city and doing an outstanding job.
Well, thank you. Next question's a little silly, so we appreciate you humoring us on it. If you could be any animal, what would you be and why?
I would probably say, it's a little off the wall, yes, but... I would, I would likely say a chimpanzee, a monkey.
Okay.
The reason being is they're highly intelligent. They're hardworking, they still get things done, they take care of their troop, but they have fun doing it. They're not afraid to just break it off and say, let's have a little bit of fu- let's have a little bit of fun while we get thing, while we accomplish things. So, you know, lions and tigers and bears are great, but that might even be the fa- I am, I am a monkey in the Chinese zodiac, so.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Well, um, our last question, um, formal question is, what additional information would you like to provide? Which might not have been covered thus far in the interview? And are there any other major points about your background you would like to emphasize?
Well, one, I am just very, I'm, my, my wife tells me, she's like, you never get excited over anything. I'm generally a very cool, calm, subdued person. But I cannot convey the excitement that I have at the possibility of coming back to Minnesota and mov- moving Crookston forward. The, the opportunities that are here for the city are just outstanding. The, the potential is amazing. I've spoken with Mr. Reynolds and he has had nothing but absolutely wonderful things to say about staff. And I would really, I would feel it would be an honor to move forward, to come, be able to move up and, uh, move our, move our city forward. My background, something that may not come through, I, my resume is varied. And some may look at that as a weakness. I look at it as the opposite. Having been a business owner, having been a real estate broker, having been a restaurant manager, and having been a trainer at Disney. I had someone ask me sometime ago, well, about six weeks ago, don't you wish you would have found this career path sooner? I said, absolutely not. Things happen the way they're supposed to happen. Because if I had found this path sooner, I would not have been successful. I would not have been very good at it. I didn't have the proper seasoning, I didn't have the right experience and perspectives. That very background that I have in my resume lets me speak to every, any member of this, our community that we have. And it's taught me how to speak to anyone from a waitress or a dishwasher at a restaurant to the CEO of a company. And each one of them deserves that respect. And I can't say honestly that my entire life I had that mentality. But time has taught me and a lot of humility. And I think with all of that experience, it rolls up and really provides an advantage to being able to lead a city and bring a city together in a unified way to move forward.
Thank you so much. We have one informal question, Don, would you like to ask?
Uh, Jeff, how was your tour of Cris- of Crookston? That was the most, how was your tour of Chris- Crookston?
It, it was informative. Mr. Reynolds made, made sure, point out, he said, we have a lot of parks, very family-friendly, we've got a lot. I saw many parts- I saw many parts of the city. I, I also drove around about four hours last night after I got here. I had dinner over at the Irishman's Shanty. And it just amazes me the amount of recreational facilities and parks and family friendly items and opportunities that y'all have here. I, I just have to, one of the things I have to say is, the Parks and Rec director standing, that's standing or sitting behind me, has got to have at least six arms and three sets of legs to keep up with everything that's going on. There were, there are obviously some areas that need some attention, but I also know that there are processes and projects in place to do that. I know that Mr. Reynolds does have scheduled up an evaluation of our infrastructure to move forward, but overall, I have to say this, it is an, we have a very beautiful community. And every single person that I've met throughout has been really, really, just very welcoming. So there's a lot of industry that you don't see just driving around. Mr. Reynolds did point out a lot of it and gave me the backstory on a couple of, how a couple of the businesses got started and that, I thought that was a really interesting perspective.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.